Well, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Greenbrier Community Center and this candidate forum for the people who are, at least three of the four candidates, who are vying for the position of, to represent us as a member of, from District Four, for the County Council. So, I will introduce, I will allow them to introduce themselves, but before we do that, I will do a little bit of housekeeping and explain how we're going to go about the rules here, so that everybody knows. The candidates have been apprised beforehand, at least I was told.
Could you hold it closer to the mic?
Okay. I don't, I don't want me to look like I was kissing it. So, it's been a long time since I've been kissed. Okay, so, as you can see, I'm holding my tablet in front of me, and, because I have some notes on it, so I'm going to share some of those notes with you. First, I'm going to introduce me. There's quite a few people who put this together, but we will cover all of them at the end. My name is Joe Bryce, and I am the President of the Prince George's County Civic Federation. And let me just say that, in a good way, I get around, which is why I'm here. I am also a manager in the federal government, and I've done that for the past 25 years, so I'm used to working with people. And I'm, I have very thick skin, so if you decide that I've done something wrong, you know, you can let me know. I'll change it. Okay, so this event is a public forum, offering Prince George's County voters, as each one of us, an opportunity to meet the candidates vying for the office of County Council, District Four, and learn their position on various issues. We, the voters, will be able to attend this forum and participate in an in-person, and are we actually doing Zoom today?
No.
We're not doing Zoom. Okay, so I shall take that part out of my presentation. So, we have the candidates here for the District Council seat, and I will now ask them, going from the gentleman at the end toward, in my direction, to introduce themselves by name. And in a moment, I will give you a bit of time to introduce yourselves properly and give a opening speech.
We're just doing names now.
Just your name, yes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michael Estev.
Good afternoon. Patrice Murray.
Good afternoon, I'm Ingrid Harrison.
And thank you all. So, the guidelines that we're abiding by this today is that we're going to give each candidate three minutes to do their presentation, their opening presentation, and we will give them each three minutes for closing presentation, our closing statement. All questions will be submitted to us in written format, and we will present them to the candidates. Now, I'm going to do a, oh, I'm sorry. The candidates, we're going to ask them to take more than three minutes to respond to the question, and the reason we ask that is we want to get as many questions and answers in, and it also shows your mental dexterity, how fast you think on your feet. And we're also throwing in a twist, okay? This is one of the things that I've done before in previous forums. I won't be asking you the questions sequentially. You won't get the same question as your predecessor, okay? But you will get that question, eventually. So, everybody will get the same questions, but you won't get them in the same order. Once again, gives you, you get a chance to tell the people that you are, you have mental dexterity, and you can think. The position is extremely challenging, and you'll have to do these things on the job. So, I think that everybody's aware of that now, that is, like I said, that's a twist that I threw in. And after the event is over, if the candidates, if each one of you wished to stay and mingle and speak with our voters here, who are participating, you're free to do so. I've been advised that the doors will be open until 6:00. At 6:01, you're on your own. Okay. Now, if I could start this way, and what I'm going to do is in, I was planning to do this alphabetical order, and allow the candidates three minutes to introduce themselves. So, Ms. Hagee, if you would start the clock for Mr. Estebay.
I appreciate your taking the time to join us today. I just want to ask the audience real quick, by show of hands, how many people here today are actually undecided voters in this race? Perfect. Now the candidates know who to make eye contact with when we're delivering our one-liners. The mic's not on my team. We're putting the mic down as undecided. I'm Michael Estev. I'm a lifelong resident of Bowie, Maryland, and I'm asking everyone in Greenbelt to not hold that against me today. I attended Prince George's County Public Elementary and Middle Schools, and went to DeMatha High School down the road, and I attended Loyola University, Maryland, in Baltimore for college, where I double majored in Political Science and French, and enjoyed a lot of ice cream.
Yeah. Is that outside or?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's why he's mayor. I attended Loyola University, Maryland, in Baltimore, where I double majored in Political Science and French, because my goal was to be unemployable in two languages. After college, I went to work in finance, where I helped to grow small businesses in and around Bowie, and after a few years of working long hours just to make shareholders a little bit richer, I decided that wasn't the most sole enriching work, and so I transitioned to the nonprofit sector, where I still work for an organization that advocates for children and adults with intellectual disabilities. In addition to my J-job for the last seven years, I've served on the Bowie City Council, where I worked with my colleagues and with our partners in the county and the state to introduce the first of two solar arrays that'll make our city net-zero carbon emitting within the next five years, where I worked with my colleagues to initiate a composting pilot program, which we are now expanding this year to include central compost location modeled on the program you guys have here in Greenbelt, and where I worked with my colleagues to protect hundreds of acres of historic forest from new development and sprawl. I appreciate your time here today and look forward to our conversation. If you have your phones on you and are willing, you can learn more about me at michaelestev.com, and as my treasurer always reminds me, if you are so moved today, you are also welcome to contribute at michaelestev.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And if I could ask everybody, please hold your applause until the end of the presentation. Okay. Ms. Murray.
I'm not a politician, so I may refer to my notes. Good afternoon. I am Patrice Murray, your candidate for County Council, District Four. I look forward to sharing my vision with you this afternoon as I earn your trust. I am your neighbor. I live in District Four, in Bowie, and I don't take your votes for granted. I know I must earn your trust. I will work as hard as I am to get your vote, as I will to support you on the County Council. I am a native Prince Georgian, a product of the public schools, and from kindergarten through junior high school. My father was an educator in the county, and once I started school, my mother also started her career in Prince George's County schools. I don't have titles, but I have been working in this community for the last 40 years. My background includes interning for then-freshman Congressman Steny Horyer, as the Director of U.S. Senator Barbara Mikulski's College Park Office for eight years, I was Town Administrator for the Town of Capitol Heights, and actually worked here in Greenbelt as a consultant with your former city manager, Mike McLaughlin. And my experience with the state legislators was both as an intern and an advocate. I attended the Morgan, the Morgan State University in Baltimore, where I served as freshman class senator, sophomore class secretary, yearbook co-editor, and senior class president. I left my dear Maryland to attend the University of Missouri, where I obtained my master's degree in public administration. I was then awarded a fellowship to work at both the University of Wisconsin and back home to Bowie State University. My husband of 40 years this coming Sunday, and I made the decision to start and raise our family here in Prince George's County. And we have been here as advocates for the last 40 years. I am compelled to serve you on the County Council to address the needs of everyday citizens, like smarter development, creating in some cases and maintaining in others a better quality of life, to advocate for full implementation of the county's climate action plan and others, but my time is running low. So, simply put, I am honest, professional, experienced, and most importantly, I am one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm Ingrid Harrison. I also refer to my notes, because sometimes I get a little nervous, but I want to make sure I cover all my points, but I'm very happy to be here today, very proud to be in Greenbelt. In regards to the County Council, District Four position, I will bring experience, commitment, and the passion for helping people to the County Council. As a resident of Prince George's County for over 27 years, I have demonstrated experience through my work as an at-large council member for the city of Bowie, by working only in the best interest of Bowie residents. My work on the Prince George's County Democratic Central Committee, to ensure you have the information you need to cast your vote. My work as Government Affairs Manager for Children's National Hospital, working with state legislators this past session, and bringing back $1.5 million to support the work of our hospital. My work as a workforce development professional, where I worked with the CEO to help establish, employ Prince George's, the workforce engine for the county, creating jobs and training programs for returning citizens, people with disabilities, and other residents with barriers to employment. And more importantly, my 10 years working in the District Four office of the County Council. I'm also a very proud HBCU graduate, and a mom, and I call myself a community advocate and not a politician. My vision is based on four pillars: smart economic development, education and workforce, safe and healthy communities, and environmental sustainability. What makes me different? I've already served 10 years in the District Four office as staff, and will hit the ground running. I have built solid relationships with federal, state, and county and local officials, and brought back results. I will continue listening to you. Lead with integrity and forge a path based on your needs. Thank you.
Thank you for holding your applause. Okay, so if I can make a couple of announcements here and a request. My request would be, could you, at this, is it time, check to see if your phones are on mute or off? And we'd be most appreciative of that. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the elected officials we do have here in the room with us. I think that we have two here, and we have our esteemed Mayor of Greenbelt, Mayor Emmett Jordan, sitting at the back. And we have a wonderful council member of Greenbelt, Jay Davis. All right, ladies and gentlemen, as somebody has made famous, God, can I get it right? Let's get ready to rumble! Okay, our first question, we'll go to Mr. Estebay. And I'm going to sort of give you a title of it. It is a land use question that came from the audience. Okay. It is, "What do you, as an elected county official, plan to do to assist the city of Bowie to achieve municipal land use?" And it does have a follow-up.
The boys and girls club are going to be really annoyed that we stole that from them. No worries. No worries at all. I know, I know. Some guys trying to keep score right now over there. I appreciate the question. The seat that I'm running for, the seat that we're all running for, doesn't cover just Bowie. It's Greenbelt, it's Glendale, it's parts of Mitchellville, little parts of Riverdale and College Park. And I know that we have a lot of Bowie-heavy questions, and we've had a lot of Bowie-heavy campaigning in this race, but I think it's important to start out with the fact that Greenbelt is one of the trend-setting municipalities, not only in Prince George's County, but in the whole region. A lot of the good ideas that we've implemented in Bowie in the last 10 years came from what you guys experienced here in Greenbelt, what you guys successfully did. So, I know that we've had a lot of Bowie-heavy stuff, but I just want to reiterate that you guys are a leader. We have often been embarrassed to be following you, and we're working hard to change that a little bit. As far as land use is concerned, I think there's going to be a two-part to this question. There's a few different things. For those of us who lived in Prince George's County for a little while, we've kind of seen a similar pattern when it comes to development. On paper, the county's development plans are pretty good. It calls for minimal growth in open space in agricultural areas, and it calls for mixed-use, higher-density, affordable housing in mass transit corridors, areas where you have metro stations, future Purple Line stops, Mark stations. The challenge is, over the years, we've seen this tendency of the County Council to grant certain exemptions through the text amendment process. It's when they use their legislative process to carve out in-county code special rules that benefit certain connected developers. We've seen that at Free State Airport in Bowie. We've seen that in areas around here. We saw that down in South Lake on 214 and 301, where they just clear-cut several acres of forest to put in a lot of low-density housing. And over the years, we've seen that kind of low-density, traffic-heavy, car-heavy sprawl in Prince George's County because of this tendency of the County Council to favor certain developers and be willing to do their bidding. So, the biggest thing for me on the County Council is that practice is going to come to an end. In both my past municipal races, I'm very proud of the fact that I've never accepted dissent from developers or their lobbyist representatives, and that's continuing in this campaign. When I was on the Bowie City Council, I guarantee you, I was on the, my picture was on the dartboards of a lot of developers, because I was oftentimes the only person willing to say no to projects that were clear-cutting forests or destroying decades-old green space to put down low-density McMansions. And to be clear, I'm not against housing and I'm not against growth. We have a housing affordability crisis, and it's driven by a lack of housing to keep up with demand. But the way we solve that is by doing what the leaders around the country and the world have done on this issue, and that is to focus higher-density housing in places where people can easily bought, wait, walk, bike, and access rail and trail, so that you can create housing that's affordable to everyone in areas where you're not just adding low-density sprawl and cars on the road, which exacerbate climate change and bring down the quality of life for everyone else. And I think there was a second part to this.
Yes, there was a second part of it, and I'll get it in very quickly. I'm going to modify the writers, the question, and to use my own experience. It appears that, well, for factually, there's only one municipality in Prince George's County that has the right to decide its own zoning. So, going to this person's question, would you plan to make Bowie, attempt to help Bowie get its own zoning rights?
Yeah, so the only community that has its own zoning authority in Prince George's is Laurel, and that's for the simple reason that they're split between two different counties in their municipal incorporated bounds, and in Laurel in general, they're split between four different counties. In an ideal world, I think municipalities have their own zoning control. I think realistically, knowing how things tend to work in the Maryland General Assembly, where the Maryland Association of Counties, it's the main lobbying group that represents all the counties, they would fight tooth and nail to make sure that no municipality outside of very certain exemptions actually gets its own zoning control. I'm not sure it's a realistic promise. In an ideal world, I'd like to see it. I'm not sure that's something that I can guarantee would actually happen. What I think we can do, however, is we can work with the Prince George's County Municipal Association, we can work with MML, to chip away at some of the, at some of the areas in which the county currently overrules the municipalities in its jurisdiction. One of the things that I hear all the time is about county permitting, the Department of Permitting, Inspections, and Enforcement. That particular office has been a hindrance to a lot of folks all throughout Prince George's County to open and start, in particular, small businesses. What I'd like to see is for Bowie, Greenbelt, College Park, all those municipalities that do their own permitting, I'd like to be able to see them have sole authority in permitting when it comes to the businesses and the residents within their jurisdictions, so that people can just go through the municipality and not have to also go through the county, where oftentimes they're dealing with a lot of additional expenses and a lot of redundant bureaucracy. So, if we can chip away at those things little by little, I think we can make a lot of progress.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Murray, your question is going to be based on healthcare, and I wrote it. Okay. Prince George's County is the only county in the state of Maryland that has to maintain its own hospital system. The state controls or regulates the amount of money that hospitals can charge for services. Despite the fact that Prince George's County has a large indigent population, the state has declined to allow hospitals to increase their fees to offset their losses. Recent Supreme Court decisions on women's healthcare may further exacerbate the financial challenges the hospital system faces. What could you propose to address the financial system of the county hospital system, and how would you pay for it?
Thank you. First and foremost, I think we all were, well, we weren't surprised by the decision by the Supreme Court, because someone leaked that out early on, but I think when it, when it was written in stone, I think we all were taken aback. So, I will start there. But, so, in Prince George's County, we need to look at ways that we can increase our tax base. Currently, it's on our shoulders. We are taxed with our homes to pay for 70% of the budget in Prince George's County, and we need to come up with some other ways, by increasing the way that we are allowing our businesses to come in. This will give us some additional funds for things like our hospitals. You know, I'm ashamed to stand here and say that our brand-new hospital has a D-rating. I don't even know if the hospital's a year old, and it has a D-rating. That's a problem. We thought we were going to move from that, from moving the hospital from one area of Prince George's to another, and that hasn't happened. We have to be able to recruit the best and retain the brightest in our county. They tout Prince George's County as some Mecca for educated, the educated, and those who make lots of money and live in McMansions, but we've got to put our money where our mouth is. We've got to stop allowing these billion-dollar businesses to get tax breaks when it's the little guys who need it. So, I would take those extra funds, and I would put it into healthcare, and I hope that that will help us to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Ms. Harrison, a question on taxes. So, as Ms. Murray so eloquently stated, the majority of the taxes that are generated are collected in Prince George's County and come from residences. So, this question came from the audience. Would you introduce and/or vote for a bill that would lower or get rid of property taxes, but only, only to offset it by another tax like a food tax or on drinks, et cetera? Thank you, thank you so much. So...
Thank you for the question. And yes, what Ms. Murray stated is correct. Right now, the residents, our property taxes are 70% of what funds our government. Commercial taxes are 30%. I would advocate to certainly make the permitting process a lot easier for businesses to come in, to do business in Prince George's County, because increasing our commercial tax base is the only way to, to not even bring in businesses, but to bring, to take the onus off of the residents and the tax base flipping, so we could have a 70% commercial tax base, 30% on the residents. But as far as, I just feel that it's definitely time to do something, we have to do something different, because this is just not working. What we're doing right now with our budget, education is number one, public safety is number two as far as funding, and I just don't see where the dollars are going in regards to our education system. So, we really need to look at doing things differently. Now, I can't say right here, right now, that I know exactly what the answer is, but I really want to get in there, work with my colleagues, work with the state, work with the federal government, to identify what we can do to make Prince George's a place where people want to come and live, have their children educated in the right way, and do business here. So, whatever it takes, I will do, and I will definitely host meetings with community, because I feel like that's the only way we're going to get what we need, because I need to listen to what you have to say and what you want, and do what you want while I'm sitting in that chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Estebay, we're going to move to that healthcare question for you. Okay. Prince George's County is the only county in the state of Maryland that maintains a Prince, its hospital system. The state controls or regulates the amount of money that hospitals can charge for services. Despite the fact that Prince George's County has a large indigent population, the state has declined to allow hospitals to increase their fees to offset their losses. Recent Supreme Court decisions on women's health may further exacerbate the financial challenges to the hospital, county hospital system. What could you propose to address the financial situation of the county hospital system, and how would you pay for it?
I don't know exactly why, but we live in a country which is extremely fond of spending more money than anyone else on things like healthcare, transportation, and education, and still manage to deliver incredibly mediocre results. We love middlemen, we love bureaucracy. For a country that I think otherwise prides itself on being efficient and hard-working and trimming the fat, we seem to have more fat and more middlemen than any other country in the world in too many sectors, and we see this in particular in healthcare. To be really candid, I don't think anyone on this stage, and I don't think anyone on the Prince George's County Council is going to single-handedly solve healthcare, and I think it'd be unrealistic for us to make that promise. There's three things that we can do, however, that we do have some power over. The first is, we have a lot of say over negotiating contracts over what sort of food our kids are eating when they're getting their meals from the Prince George's County Public School System. While I was on the Bowie City Council, I worked with our school board members, I visited every single public school in and around Bowie, and I got to tell you, I'm, I'm not saying that everyone else needs to adopt my health nut life, but what our kids are eating is pretty awful. Our idea of a healthy meal in our kids' diets is gross, and it's not exactly a surprise to me when I look around at the obesity rates and the negative health impacts that we're seeing among our children in Prince George's County and that we're seeing in our state and our country. So, one thing we can do right off the bat is we can actually take ownership of this issue at the school level. One, make sure that we're offering healthier options to our kids when they're eating their meals. We have a lot of students in Prince George's County, and we saw this especially during the pandemic, who are getting a disproportionate share of their meals from the school system. The second thing we can do is make sure that we're actually encouraging people to be healthier, all right? So, one of the things in Bowie that I'm really happy about is that I worked with my colleagues to redo our Trails Master Plan, so that we're better connecting residents to parks, to shopping, to work. We also introduced a first-ever complete streets policy in Bowie, so that when people are biking and walking to work and to their shops, they're able to do so more safely. But also for our kids, I'd really love to see in schools a lot more recess time. It seems like a silly thing. I see one teacher who's cheering in the back, but when our kids go to school, it's almost as though it was designed by, like, prison wardens, not by pedagogic experts. They have maybe 15 minutes of recess, they're spending another six hours sitting still, and then they get diagnosed with ADHD, and everyone wonders why the kids are a mess. When I went to school as a kid, we had like two hours of recess spread throughout the day. I don't think I ever sat at a desk for more than an hour, and that made a huge difference. Kids were able to focus a lot more, kids got a lot more physical exercise, kids socialized a lot more, and I see absolutely no reason in the world why we shouldn't be pushing for that in Prince George's County.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Murray, your question will be the taxes question that we just passed. So, as you stated earlier, Prince George's County brings in most of its revenue from residential, our taxes on our residences, our homes. Would you introduce and/or vote for a bill that would lower or get rid of property tax, only to offset it with another tax like, one on, I'll read it verbatim this time, corn, syrup, and foods and drinks?
And yes, I did mention before that 70% of the county's budget comes from our backs, quite frankly. And I think that there's no way that we could go in and get rid of all of our property taxes. It would be wonderful. I mean, it would make a difference in my life, but the reality is, that's, that's something But the reality is, that's something that we will have to live with. But my concern is that we bring in some businesses, small businesses. You take an example of the mall down here in Greenbelt, and it's full of small businesses. I've been through there, talking to the business owners, and, you know, it was wonderful to see that it was an entire mall filled with small businesses. This was a mall that was failing at one point. Again, I'm a lifelong Prince Georgian, so I've seen the ebbs and flows of businesses around these parts. And they took that and created something new. And I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. We can do that all across the county, all over District Four and in other places as well, so that we can increase our tax base, bring in some more dollars that will relieve us. So I wouldn't be able to get rid of our property taxes, but hopefully that would make a difference in it not rising as it has been over the years. Thank you.
So we'll go to the land use question. Okay. So that, as I stated earlier, the only municipality in Prince George's County that has the right and privileges to formulate their own zoning board and issues is Laurel. So the question was, what would you, as an elected official, plan to do to assist the city of Bowie to achieve municipal land use? And I will go ahead with the follow-up question here was, do you plan to make Bowie getting municipal land use your priority?
I would love to do that. I would love to be able to see all municipalities have their own zoning authority. However, we know that's just not a reality. What I've experienced on the Bowie City Council is where we were against something, or even for something, the county council either didn't listen to what we wrote as far as letters, or just did something in the opposite. But what we do as a municipality is we listen directly to the people, the residents. And I know the county council says that they do the same, and I know that's what I will do if I'm elected to the county council. But I believe there needs to be more of a listening ear to what the residents are looking for when it comes to these development projects. And certainly when it comes to infrastructure. Right now, we have too much traffic, we have the developers coming in and overdeveloping, taking down our green space, our trees. So, you know, there's a, and we, like I said, we have our own opinions on things as a municipality that sometimes don't get heard. And we are direct reflections of what our residents want. And that's what I want to be to you on the county council. I'm not going to be dismissive to your needs when it comes to development and land use. I can't say that I will definitely get zoning authority for either Bowie or any other municipality, but I'll certainly work towards doing that if that's something that you want me to fight for. And I will give you all the options that are available in order to do that, what the benefits are and what the benefits might not, aren't the benefits to that, and what I can do to better help you if zoning authority isn't a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stebe. So of the first three questions, I think it's your opportunity for the health care. No, no, Mr. Stebe.
I just did health care.
Okay. You did the health care.
Taxes. You don't have to repeat the question.
It's okay. Go ahead.
All right. Let's talk about taxes. So I've gone through Greenbelt. One of the things that I appreciate about you guys in particular, and I think this is true of a lot of Marylanders in general, is in Greenbelt, it's understood that if you want quality services, you got to pay money for them. If we want our frontline workers, the folks who are picking up our trash, who are teaching our children, who are running our towns, who are there answering 911 when we need help or have a medical emergency, if we want those folks to make a living, to be able to support themselves and their families and afford housing in this market, we need to be willing to pay. We've heard a lot from our state lawmakers and from many of our county lawmakers in the last few years about how much more money we need to invest in our schools. The blueprint for our future is a billion, multi-billion-dollar plan over the next few years. It's supposed to transform one-third of our existing public schools into community schools that provide a whole range of wraparound services, including a lot of health care, a lot of counseling, a lot of needs for families who may be struggling. And that's on top of the fact that we have an underfunded state employee public health care system and an underfunded state employee public pension system. Like a lot of states, we have some really, really, really big costs we've incurred in the last few decades that are coming down the pike. And Marylanders and Greenbelt residents in particular, I think, understand that all of that costs a lot of money. So when I talk about taxes with folks in Greenbelt, the thing that I tend to hear residents tell me isn't, I really, really, really wish my property taxes were a lot lower. What they tend to say is, I wish the quality, the services I got from the county were better and matched what I was paying in taxes. People can handle higher taxes when their streets are free of litter. They can handle higher taxes when they have a world-quality school system. They can handle higher taxes when they have excellent public works and when day-to-day problems get quickly and professionally addressed. What they can't handle is paying what they're paying now and getting mediocre services in return. And so what I want to work to do on the county council isn't necessarily to promise that we're going to be able to significantly cut taxes, because I think anyone making that promise is lying or doesn't know what they're talking about. We're not going to be able to cut taxes anytime soon. We're working with a state that's promising billions of dollars in new spending. But what I can promise you is that I will work every single day to make sure that the services you're getting from your county are the best they can possibly be, the most efficient they can possibly be, and that we're spending your tax dollars on ensuring that every single one of our workers is able to live a quality life. Thank you.
Thank you. So as everyone can see by Mr. Stebe, I've gotten predictable, so we're going to change it up just a little bit. Okay. Let me interject another question into the mold there. So Ms. Murray, what changes, if any, do you think are needed in how land use decisions are made in our county? And how will you make those changes happen?
Thank you. Actually, when you said you were going to change up, I got a little worried, because development is what got me in this race. The county is overdeveloping without any clear plan, and that's my concern. I think Ms. Harrison alluded to it a little earlier, talking about out in Bowie where right on 301, we have two developments going on. One with 600 homes, one with 1,300 to 1,800 homes coming up on a road that is bumper-to-bumper seven days a week already. So I have some concerns. And I probably have now gotten off the question, I told you all I'm not a politician, but I want you to understand development, what development means to me. I think, you know, of course we need it. Of course we need more housing. Of course we need quality retail that we can all get to. But we have to be smarter about the way we develop. We have to look at the infrastructure. If you put even 600 homes in a community, do we have the police force that can handle an additional 600 calls? And then you think on the other side of Central Avenue, you've got 1,800 homes coming up, two hotels, 10 ball fields. We've got to have people who can take care of that. Our fire department, do we have the staff that will take care of that? We have to look at how we develop, when we develop, and not after we develop. And so it's been my pet peeve. I may have gone off a little bit on what the actual question was, but the point is, development in our county needs to be a thoughtful process. And I will do everything in my power to make sure that the planning department is listening to us. The second tenant of my platform is civic engagement. It's why I'm knocking on your doors, and I've probably knocked on every one of yours, because I want to know your thoughts. Because I've got my red chair, and I'm taking it with me to the county council so that they know the everyday person's needs, because I'm one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. Ingram, we're going to ratchet up even a little bit more. Okay? I have a bit of a preamble. Five days a week, Prince George's County residents clog the roadways leaving the county to earn a living. This is because the business and industry they use to earn that living are located outside of the county. A collateral consequence of this daily migration is the amount of money spent in the areas of the county where those residents live or work. Since we go to them, those businesses refuse to locate in Prince George's County. The question, what ideas do you have to bring business and industry to Prince George's County?
Well, as I talked about before, and I believe Michael mentioned as well, we all know the issues with Deepi. And I hear that all the time. In fact, I was speaking to someone yesterday who said, we have to fix that process. No one wants to come here because there's so much red tape they have to deal with just to get into the county. It is just amazing to me, too, to listen to the businesses that are already here dealing with challenges with Deepi. So they'll have their business here, and then somebody from Deepi will come in and say, okay, this isn't right, you need to do this, and they have to incur another cost to make changes. The policies, the process, it's just not working. So to me, that is the number-one barrier to businesses coming into our county. We have to fix that. And what I'm seeing is, it's a top-down process or a top-down issue. The people at the top aren't speaking to the people who are actually in the field. So Deepi is the number-one challenge that we have to fix, because other counties aren't dealing with that. Montgomery County is thriving. Their permitting process is so easy and so efficient. Businesses can go there and just thrive because they can get in a lot easier than they can get into Prince George's County. But a lot of people, a lot of businesses, don't want to deal with our permitting office. So that is one thing. We've come a long way, don't get me wrong. I remember it was a big challenge a few years ago when I was actually working as staff there, and then they kind of revamped Deepi in the process, but it still needs a lot of work. So that is one thing that I promise that I will work to do, and that is to make that more efficient process. Work with my colleagues, work with you, work with whoever I need to work with to make our county more business-friendly. Thank you.
And since I'm still pitching, I'll throw another curve. Okay. Mr. Stebe, captains of industry have stated that it would not be in their best interest to locate in Prince George's County. They cite our high crime rate, which is the second highest in the state, and our school system, which is the second worst in the state. How would you address those two major issues to entice captains of industry to come to Prince George's County?
It's really tempting for policymakers to approach these issues completely backwards. So oftentimes, politicians will say, in order to attract the better businesses, in order to attract wealthier people, in order to attract more families and folks who are going to pay a lot of money into our tax system, we've got to spend a huge fortune to make the schools the best first, got to spend a huge fortune in giveaways to get the big employers and the high-end businesses here first. And so often, what you end up with is a county like Prince George's, where you've simply made too many deals with too many big companies and too many big employers, and then the only reason anyone stays is because you promised them that they're going to have to pay very little in taxes, or they'll get all sorts of breaks. And you don't necessarily actually fix the schools or turn yourself into a county where people want to live. I've worked a lot with MML over the years, I've worked a lot with the National League of Cities over the years. One of the things we actually see towns doing really effectively when they're trying to turn a corner, it's not that they go to the schools and say, all right, how many billions of dollars do I need to make this a better school first? Because let's be honest about something. I think anyone who's worked with the school system for any period of time, a lot of friends who teach, my mom taught, and I talk to school administrators constantly, and I talk to students and parents as well, money going into the school system is great, it's not enough. You can spend a fortune on education and have the nicest buildings in the world and have the best-paid teachers and have, you know, beautiful gymnasiums and auditoriums, but if the kids coming to school are coming with lots of trauma and lots of challenges from their home lives, it doesn't matter how much money you spend, they're going to struggle. All right? So what we have to do, and what other towns and counties across the country have done successfully, is what they do first is they ask themselves, how do we make this place a place people want to be? On the Bowie City Council, I worked with, we have a lot, just as you do in Greenbelt, we have a lot of retirees who've been engineers and planners and who have 20-pound brains, and they love doing stuff for the city for free, which is great because we couldn't afford the consultants that we'd otherwise have to hire. We created a multimodal and public spaces committee in Bowie, and we asked exactly this question. Turns out, when you look at other towns across the country, when they put more forethought into their development plans to do placemaking, we're creating public, open spaces, making it easy for businesses to set up around them, make it easy to access those spaces by bike, by trail, by walking, on sidewalks, you can go really, really, really far in bringing people, customers, families, to those spaces. And once you have people, it's a lot easier to convince businesses to set up shop in those areas. Once you have the people and once you have the businesses, you start developing a local reputation, and people start to want to move in. Next thing you know, the old Levitt homes start to get filled up with families who just want to live in this kind of cool, neat, happening space. And over time, you start to experience the kind of organic growth that leads to engaged people and engaged community. And that itself tends to lift up the schools and the services and the programs. That's the way we need to approach it. It's not as sexy, it takes a lot longer, but that's the way we need to do it.
Thank you. Ms. Murray, I'm still pitching curves here, because you guys are, I've shown that you are adept, and you're smart. So here's another curve. What can the county council do to accelerate a transition to renewable energy in our county and make buildings more energy-efficient?
Thank you for the curveballs. My daughter played softball, she was a pitcher, and I had to be the catcher. So I learned quickly. But the county, I'm sorry, I started off with that, and then, you know, I told you all I'm not a politician, so it may take me a minute to get back on track. But we need to, with regard to our development, we need to make sure that, again, that we are first and foremost looking at the infrastructure first. And we need to move forward in making sure that our residents who will be impacted are in on the planning process. And I think I have gone off and may have missed some of the question. And if I could take a second of my...
I can reread the question.
Please.
What can the county council do to accelerate a transition to renewable energy? Nope, that's not the right one.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. I was talking about softball, and I got excited. Renewable energy? I am the only candidate who testified with the county council on passing the Climate Action Plan that they spent money to pay a commission for to develop. It is time for us to get back to basics. You know, Michael talked about biking and communities that we could get around in easily. We don't need to be building homes on 301 where there's no transportation, public transportation. In the communities that we're in right now, they're talking about cutting some of that transportation. So we need to, again, I knew it had something to do with development, we need to go back, look at how we're developing, to make sure that we incorporate and make sure that they use this Climate Action Plan. They came up with it. Let's have this council, the council put it on hold. It is time for us to move forward and make sure that there is a Prince George's County for our children. I think Ms. Harrison alluded to a little earlier that they come in and knock down acres of trees, and that's what they do. They might put a tree or two back when they finish developing, but we're not going to benefit from that. So we definitely have to follow our own Climate Action Plan and make sure that our county can follow the city of Bowie and reduce our emissions. Thank you.
And thank you. Ms. Harrison, we're still pitching curveballs here. So here's another one. So here's another one. The late former county executive Wayne Curry divided the county into the developed tier, the developing tier, and the rural tier. He pressed developers to renovate the developed tier and build more in the developing tier. We have had a boom of townhouse subdivisions in the rural tier, but have had, but we still have plenty of boarded, dilapidated houses in the county. Would you consider putting a moratorium on development and pressing developers to renovate the areas in the developed tier and the developing tier?
As far as a moratorium, I'd certainly have to, once I get in the seat, understand what that would look like. A moratorium on development, that's huge. I certainly would look at what types of development our people, our developers, looking to bring to Prince George's County as far as new development. Yes, I would press upon them to work on the dilapidated developments that they're, I'm not sure which areas you're speaking of, certainly in District 4, but also look at bringing in other residential forms of housing outside of townhomes. I feel like here in Prince George's County, that's all we get. So we need more mixed-use development, transit-oriented development, and we need more homes that are not just townhomes. So we need some variety. Also would certainly, my whole thing with developers is collaboration and partnership. I feel that I work very well with people. I know many people here in Prince George's County and can sit down and have a conversation about what their plans are and how, what the needs of District 4 residents are in those plans. And if they're not addressed, then I'm going to let you all know that I'm not going to be for it because the needs of the residents are priority. So with any development, I want to come to you to find out if that's something that you're looking to do, if that's what you want, and that's what I'm going to fight for. Thank you.
We're going to give you all the same softball question because you probably have different answers. What are the, what are the top five issues you are focusing on in your campaign? Top five?
So I sort of stumbled into politics the way that some people do. I had the misfortune of growing up in a neighborhood where a lot of my buddies who went to school with me, their dads all did politics. Some of you may know Senator Peters, who just retired from the State Senate. Some of you may know Glenn Ivy. And I remember when I was in high school, one of my buddies, James Peters, his dad was county councilman Doug Peters at the time, he would drive us to school every other morning in whatever BMW he was leasing that quarter. And I remember over the years, the BMWs got a lot smaller, and the high school football players I was crammed in the backseat with kept getting bigger, and by the end of the year, we were on each other's laps. I've been doing this since I was 15 years old, and I remember when I worked in Annapolis doing constituent services in the summer of 2006, I remember being very disenchanted with how the political process worked in the Maryland General Assembly. I was very young, but you could tell that there were an awful lot of people in state government, the administrative side and the legislative side and the executive side at the time, who were not exactly in it because they really, really, really wanted to improve the quality of life of the people who sent them there. And I remember being pretty disgusted, even as a young person, with the kinds of things I saw by how I heard lobbyists and elected leaders talk behind closed doors about the people that they represented. And I remember thinking that if I ever stayed politically engaged, that I would want to do it a little bit differently. And by a little bit differently, I would just want to be a little bit more honest about my intentions, about what I was going to do, that I wouldn't try and make promises that I knew I couldn't keep. You know, I'm working with a lot of progressive groups, and they often tell me that I'm the bummer in the room because I'm always the guy who's like, "We shouldn't make this promise. We're not going to be able to do it." And they're like, "Yeah, but this promise is exciting. That's what our people want to hear." And I say, "Yeah, but letting them down all the time is why they're always angry. Maybe let's be honest with them. Maybe let's have a conversation." The good news is there's an awful lot that we can do. I don't think it's unrealistic at all for us to reform the Department of Permitting Inspections and Enforcement. As Ingrid has said and as Patrice has said, it is one of the biggest barriers we have to attracting and retaining businesses in this county. I don't think that's an impossible lift. I think that's something we can do. Two, thanks to the leadership of the municipalities in Prince George's County, I don't think it's unrealistic for our county to become a regional leader in fighting climate change. We have municipalities all across this county that are already taking on composting, reducing landfill use, introducing EV charging stations, something Tom Dernoga just successfully did at the county level, making sure that we're converting our fleets to electric and hybrid vehicles so that we're reducing our own government carbon emissions. I also don't think it's unrealistic for us to expect and get better-quality schools. And that starts with making sure that we're attracting top talent, that we're keeping educators longer than the current three-and-a-half years that they're staying in our school system, making sure that we're giving principals and administrators and teachers the tools they need to run their classrooms and have more autonomy, and not just test kids every two weeks, but actually teach them. That's three things. I'll come back on the other two. I want to think about that. I think it's a good question. I want to give, I want to give an honest and complete answer. I'll get back to you on the other two.
Ms. Murray, same question. What are your top five issues that you're focusing on in your campaign?
Certainly, thank you. And I had to pull out my handout because I have more than five, and I had to knock some of them off. What are my top five? That is smarter development. You've heard me talk about that all evening, so I won't get into that, but it is my top. Increasing civic engagement because it's important that we involve the citizens of this county and this district in how we legislate. It's just, it's imperative, and it's why I'm doing it because I've been on the outside trying to make changes and making changes in my own community, helping to create a better quality of life. Now, I'll tell you, Greenbelt, you all have it, you all have it down pat. It's, it's a wonderful quality of life in Greenbelt, and we've got to make sure all of District 4 has that same quality. Local stores, venues where they can go to the movies and that kind of thing. We want to make that quality of life, like Michael said, so that people get what they are paying for in their taxes. County cleanliness. How many people have come to me and said, "There's trash all over the place"? My view is that we've got to make the departments accountable. We've already got people who will pick up the trash that we shouldn't put down ourselves, but we need to make sure that they held accountable, whether it's on the state level or the county level. And last but not least of my top five is trying to make all of our schools quality. Quality schools, not just one here or there. Yeah, we've got Roosevelt, and we, you know, those kids do well. But all of our schools, we need to be using these tax dollars to make sure that parents don't have to drive 20 minutes to another county to send their children to school. Thank you.
And thank you. Ms. Harrison, same question. What are the top five issues that you are focusing on in your campaign?
Top five issues for me? The first one is affordable workforce housing. We live in a very expensive county, and there are a lot of people even who feel that they can afford it can no longer afford it. And then there are people who want to live here who can afford to live here. And you have students, you know, graduating from college. You have our seniors who can barely afford to pay their rent because it's going up every year. So we really need to look at how we can make housing more affordable here in Prince George's County. That's one thing. I hear that from seniors every day, and then my own daughter says she couldn't even afford to live here if, when she graduates next year. So that's a problem. We want to make sure we encourage residents and people to come and stay and live in Prince George's County. Education. Education is what we put the bulk of our funds in for, in our budget, and that's something we got to fix. One thing that I see as a problem, mental health. We just opened a new mental health facility for adults, which is great, but our children need help. We need another, we need another mental health resource for our kids, and that's certainly a passion of mine, working for a children's hospital, and I see that need here in Prince George's County. Public safety. Do our kids feel safe going to school? Do we feel safe going to the grocery store, to church? That's something we really need to work with our public safety officials to help our residents feel safe. Even if we have drills, we just need to put more money into training and figuring out what we need to do to make sure we have a safer place to live. Environment, totally for reducing greenhouse gases, pushing forward with our Climate Action Plan. And I think I was discussing earlier that, you know, we have this plan in place, but are we actually going to put the money into moving it forward? That's the key. You can say all day, "Oh, sure, we have this legislation," but do, are we going to put money behind our words? That's what we have to do for Climate Action. And last but not least, infrastructure. People talk to me about roads all the time and some of the bridges and just how we need to prioritize fixing our roads, fixing our traffic patterns, and ensuring that we don't have that overdevelopment causing all the traffic in our area. Thank you very much.
We'll come back to the curveballs now. All right, good guys. So, Mr. Stave, I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Yes, that, that it won't kill me.
Okay. I dabbled in Spanish a few years ago, and then I leaned toward that anyway. Okay. And I saw the accent over the name, so I went with the Spanish. Forgive me if I'm incorrect. Okay. Question that was posed to Ms. Harrison earlier. The late former county executive Wayne Curry divided the county into the developed tier, the developing tier, and the rural tier. He pressed developers to renovate the developed tier and build more in the developing tier. We have had a boom of townhouse subdivisions in the rural tier, but have plenty of boarded, dilapidated houses in the county. Would you consider putting a moratorium on development and renovating, pressing developers to renovate areas that could be used more sprucing up?
Yes, I apologize. I'm going to start by finishing my answer to the last one, one of which actually ties directly to this. As far as two other issues that I think are really critical, one is making sure that we have a serious plan for addressing public safety going forward. We've kind of gone through a bit of a pendulum swing in the last three years in our country with public safety and how we want to do policing. A reality that communities all across the country are grappling with right now is making sure that they simultaneously have public safety officers who are well-trained, who are recruited from the communities where they're working, who have ties to the communities that they're keeping safe, and who know what tools to use and to use them appropriately and to de-escalate so that unarmed, everyday people, in particular people of color, are able to go home safely at the end of the day after interaction with law enforcement. But we also need to make sure that we're better leveraging technology to improve public safety without just having to have an armed police officer on every corner. We've done a lot in Bowie. I know Greenbelt's making progress on this. This is something we can also realistically do in the county. The fifth issue for me, and this ties directly to the question about Wayne Curry and the three development tiers, I want to make sure Prince George's County actually fully funds the public finance campaign system that it created, mirroring the program in Montgomery County, which has tended to level the playing field so that everyday folks can run for office and not have to depend on large campaign contributions from developers. As far as the development tiers, I think there's a couple of things right now. Developers often present us with a false choice. They'll say, "If you want affordable housing, if you want us to do business in your county, if you want to grow your tax revenue, you have to play ball with us and give us what we're asking for, or we're simply going to go to Anarundel or Charles or Howard or somewhere else." That is a false choice. I've worked with developers long enough to have a collegial, if not oppositional, relationship with them from time to time, but I've worked with them long enough to understand they will do business here, but they need a few things. They need to know what our rules are, and they need to know that those rules are consistent. When I talk to developers about how easy they have it in Prince George's because they just grease palms and get the text amendments they need, they say, "Actually, Prince George's isn't that easy to deal with." I say, "In Montgomery County, they've got a 400-page rulebook. They have a million demands for environmental mitigation and forest protection and funds we have to pay into the school system, and it's a tough and arduous process." But we prefer that process because it's consistent. It's not meddled with by politicians. We don't have to worry about a county bureaucrat being in a bad mood or having upset the wrong county council person or getting called up to district council without worry. You see, the reason why it's so hard to do anything in Prince George's County is because of the lack of predictability, because our process is so political. And so if we want a better county and if we want better quality development that doesn't just clear-cut forests and put down Whorvik Mansions, that actually builds the kind of housing that our, your kids and grandkids, my peers, can live in and afford to live in and build their lives in, we need a better process. And other counties have this. There's no reason we can't adopt that. But let's start by electing leaders who aren't taking money from the development community to start with. Let's have a consistent process like other jurisdictions do for better outcomes.
Back to the curveballs. Prince George's County leads the state in deforestation during the past few years, but developments are still approved that clear-cut our woodlands. Where do you think new housing and businesses should be built in the county and why?
I assume that was for me.
Sorry. For Mrs. Murray.
Yes, thank you. So I think we've talked a lot about development and the overdevelopment in our county. And if you look at some of the areas that even have access to public transportation, they have a lot of space and a lot of greenland that is already, you know, they've torn down homes. Let's look at a place like District 7. I know I have been the chief of staff for the council member in that district, and there are a lot of places, infill places, where we could develop in the county that would put you close to a metro, right on a bus line, and not cause us to cut down acres and acres of trees. There was just a request about two weeks ago to add another 600 and some odd trees that they wanted to remove right near the place where I was talking about earlier, South Lake, where they took down acres of trees. Then they took down some more trees to put down a place for 10 ball fields, and now they want to take down another 600, I think it was 616, trees in order to put, you know, some kind of agency or business there. We've got to look at what we already have available to us. And like I said, in places like Green, sorry, places like Capitol Heights and Sutland, there are plenty of places that are accessible to the metro, where people could walk to the metro for infill. Let's start there. Let's stop cutting down our trees. I mean, we all moved out to where we live for a reason. You know, I know that some of our former, now former council members want a downtown Largo, but we moved, you know, many of you moved out of the District of Columbia because you didn't want to live in the city. We want to live in the rural tier. We've got folks who live in the rural tier who don't want any more development over there. They moved there for a purpose. You've got people who have farms, who raise chickens, and on whose farms I sometimes work because I don't mind getting my hands dirty. You have people who just have normal communities who now have townhouses going up in their backyard. It's time for us to do smarter development so that we can live in the place where we, frankly, where we wanted to live, in the county, not in the city. Thank you.
And thank you. And Ms. Harrison, we're going back to one of those previous questions. Okay. Captains of industry have stated that it would not be in their best interest to locate in Prince George's County. They have cited our high crime rate, which is the second-highest in the state, and our school system, which is the second-worst in the state. How would you go about addressing these issues that would entice business captains of industry? How would you go about addressing these issues that would entice captains of industry to locate in Prince George's County?
I think I did. I think I answered that already. But my answer was to bring businesses to Prince George's County, again, is to break down the barrier at Deep High and definitely use the money that we're putting into the budget right now, which is the number-one priority, education. Use that money to actually enhance education. I would love to get into more of the county budget and get into the details and figure out exactly what we're putting our money into as far as the kids are concerned and our teachers. We need to make sure that they're paid, what they need to have paid. We need to make sure our facilities are up to speed, up to code, and get our kids out of those trailers. So there's a lot that we need to do that we're already paying for, that you all are already paying for in your taxes right now. We need to dig into that and figure out how we can allocate some of that money to actually make the quality of life better overall in education, public safety, and that will certainly, to me, bring more businesses, more people to Prince George's County. Thank you.
So once again, ladies and gentlemen, candidates approve that they're smarter than me, so I'm going to go back to a traditional format, and I'm going to ask them all the same question. So the next three questions will be the same for each one of you, and these relate to qualifications. The first question is, the fourth councilmanic district comprises an area of diverse interests and needs. It consists of chartered municipalities, census-designated locations, and neighborhoods. Could you share your understanding of the district and your top priorities in your first 120 days in office?
Yeah, so District 4 is principally Bowie, Greenbelt, and Glendale. It's principally low-density. It's interesting when I talk even to residents who live in Greenbelt, depending on the neighborhood they're in, they might not have even traveled to many other parts of the city that they are in. I certainly see that in Bowie. I was maybe 20 minutes from the city's historic Bel Air mansion talking to a resident the other day, and when the Bel Air mansion came up in conversation, they said, the what? I said, you know, that huge 18th-century mansion like three streets down from you? They said, I didn't know we had that. They'd lived in Bowie for 20 years. So describing the district to people, I find, is always an interesting exercise because folks often don't know what's in their own backyard. And that's unfortunately in large part because of how we were built in this area over the years, you know? We were a 1960s-style, low-density suburb designed around the car because we decided after World War II, when Europe was doubling down on trains and smart growth, we said, nope, we want our cars, we want our independence, we want to clear out of our cities, and we want the low-density sprawl that we're all paying very high taxes to maintain and replace today. As far as being in office, one of the biggest challenges we have in Prince George's County, and this alludes to a question that the moderator asked earlier, we have this nasty reputation for dysfunction, whether it's our school board, whether it's past county executives who ended up in jail, whether it's this general stench of impropriety that I think often surrounds Upper Marlboro, related to how we handle development and certain other issues, how we did or how the county attempted to do the map changes for the district maps recently, which fortunately got shut down in court. One of the biggest things we need to do is we need to do a better job talking to one another. In my time on the city council, in my two terms there, one of the things that I had the most success with was getting adversaries in the same room, closing the door, and saying, we're not leaving here until we start understanding each other a little bit better. And I'll tell you what, in college, I was a resident assistant. I'm often told I give off that vibe. But what I learned to do as an RA in conflict mediation, even though that was 16 years ago, those were some of the most valuable skills that I have that they simply do not teach you when you get involved in local government or any level of government for that matter. Learning how to communicate with your colleagues, with stakeholders, with residents, to get people in the same room, talking honestly and candidly about how different issues and decisions impact them directly, and coming up with, yes, imperfect, but better-than-the-alternative compromises to improve people's lives, that makes the biggest difference. And so the first order of business for me, if voters choose me to be their county councilman for this area, it's going to be to continue having those conversations and facilitating some ones that we've needed for a long time between residents, between their elected leaders, among the politicians themselves, among administrators, and start building that trust and building that communication early on because that will make a very, very big difference as we work to tackle some of these difficult issues over the next four years.
Thank you. And Ms. Murray, I will read the question again. The fourth councilmanic district comprises an area that is with diverse interests and needs. It consists of chartered municipalities, census-designated locations, and neighborhoods. Could you share your understanding of the district and your top priorities in your first 120 days in office?
I've been on this journey over a year now, and during that time, I've been knocking on doors and I've been talking to residents. I've been talking to the folks around me in Bowie, where I live, who, whose issues I know. Many of them have to do with infrastructure. But in Bowie also, there are concerns about cleanliness in some parts of our city and having quality retail nearby so we don't have to get on a highway and go just to shop. Then you've got a part of Bowie who is looking at revitalization. They need to revamp old Bowie. It's time. Then you go on up, move up north to Glendale. Glendale feels forgotten. They just simply feel forgotten. They say, nobody ever comes here to ask us anything. Well, I am because I'm taking you along with us, along with the Bowie residents, along with the Greenbelt residents, the Queen Anne residents, all the way down to Leland Road. I got you. I'm taking everybody's concerns. Greenbelt, Maglev. Under no uncertain terms, that's the first thing I hear and the last thing I hear, is we don't want Maglev. And I don't either, and I don't live in Greenbelt. But we don't need something coming through our county that doesn't benefit us at all. They just want to dig through so that it makes it convenient for some folks who have more money than I do to ride from DC to New York in an ungodly amount of time. So I'm out here listening. In Upper Marlboro, they just want their area to stay rural. They don't have any crime out there to speak of. You know, they have their farms, they have their land, and they have one another. And that's what they want. They want it to maintain like that. So in my first 100 days, it won't be any different than my year and a half in 13 degrees, knocking on doors, in 90 degrees, knocking on doors. I just plan to involve people who are like me, regular folk, because it's what I am in the process of government. Thank you.
And thank you. And Ms. Harrison, I will read the question again. The fourth councilmanic district comprises an area that with diverse interests and needs, it comprises of chartered municipalities, census-designated locations, and neighborhoods. Could you share your understanding of the district and your top priorities in your first 120 days in office?
Thank you for the question. And yes, District 4 is very diverse, and our demographic changes very frequently. So you really have to be a person who can talk to people of different backgrounds, different nationalities, different religions, and really listen to what their needs are, partnering with all of the community and not just a part of the community, partnering with each of the areas that are in District 4, Greenbelt, Glendale, Bowie, part of Upper Marlboro, you know, all the pieces, land 'em. We have to partner and collaborate with the residents and meet all the needs of each of the residents that are in our district. So I believe in partnership and collaboration. So during my first 100 days, as soon as I get into office, I would certainly meet with my staff and outline my vision and hear from them what they've encountered through the last eight years or more because actually the same staff that I worked with when I was there are still there. So I actually communicate with them frequently just to find out what's going on, what their thoughts are. And of course, as a Bowie council member, I keep in close communication with Councilmember Turner to make sure that we're on the same page and have questions. If I have any questions, I talk to him about that. I stay engaged with him, stay engaged with Greenbelt as well. I have many friends here who I talk to, and I'm also against Maglev, but I just want to learn more about what you all want to see me do in District 4. So that's really going to be the driver for me. I'll also meet with agency heads, all the agency heads, public safety officials, all the principals in the D4 schools, certainly Dr. Bro, who is Bowie State University president. It's very important that you engage all the educational heads to find out what their needs are and what they're looking for. Here I am coming in as a new county council member. Yes, I want to improve education, but I need to hear from you, what does it look like? What do I need to do? Certainly meet with the Greenbelt City Council and find out from them what I can do better and be more of a partner to them and have meetings with them more frequently. Certainly meet with Glendale Citizens Association and other neighborhoods that might not be part of that, find out what their needs are, meet with Bowie residents and organizations in Bowie. Because certainly I'm aware of what's going on with the Bowie City Council, but I need to get into the Bowie neighborhoods and find out, okay, now I'm elected, what else do you, what would you want me to do first? What do you want me to get on the ground running to do for you, for you, Greenbelt, for you, Glendale, for you, Bowie? And I will certainly be accountable. I have integrity, and I just want to hear from you and what your needs are. So I'm dedicated to doing what it is that you're looking to help your life be better in Prince George's County. Thank you.
And thank you. The next question is for all three of you. Public financing of campaigns was passed in Prince George's County and is to take effect in 2026. Currently, that legislation is unfunded. Would you take an interest in funding the mandate to give people who aren't part of the infrastructure an opportunity to run for office?
One of the most important things that we can do in our county and in our state to restore trust between residents and their elected leaders is make sure that we are showing them that their elected leaders are not just on the hook for the biggest, most powerful, most moneyed interests. One of the easiest ways we can do that is make sure that there is an even playing field so that the people who are in office aren't the ones who are just taking the largest share of dollars from the liquor stores, the developers, the various other lobbyists and special interests who have too much of a say in Upper Marlboro and Annapolis and in Washington DC. This for me is a priority. I want to make sure that our public finance system is not only fully funded, but that it is widely advertised so that anyone who has any interest whatsoever in public engagement can get involved, can navigate the process easily, can get access to those dollars if they choose to run for office, and can compete. I like the fact that the county, as they so often do, made sure that they were exempted from being impacted by this by pushing it off for several years, even though they could have absolutely implemented it in this election, but they didn't. They wanted to make sure that their chosen candidates were given every advantage. They redrew a district map that cut several candidates for office out of their districts. I'm sad to say Todd Turner was one of those council members who did that, and I will not forgive him for it ever because I think it showed some true colors on his part. But this is the sort of thing we need to do. I hear county officials complain all the time, oh, the people don't like us. And I'm like, yeah, because you make yourself so unlikable. Some of this stuff is not hard. A lot of issues are hard. Education is hard. Public safety is hard. This kind of stuff is not hard. When you go through the public finance reports and see the who's who of every developer and lobbyist in the state behind many of our elected leaders, some of whom call themselves progressives, but never miss an opportunity to screw over workers or seniors or little people, it's maddening. And it's part of the reason why, top to bottom, there's so little trust in government these days. So this is an easy one for me.
Thank you. Ms. Murray, I'll read the question again. Public financing was passed, campaigns was passed in Prince George's County to go into effect in 2026. The legislation is not funded. Would you take an interest in funding the mandate to ensure that candidates who are not part of the current infrastructure have an opportunity to run for office?
Thank you. I could actually just say absolutely and sit down, but this gives me an opportunity to talk about it a little bit because I think Michael said, making it an even playing field. And that's what we need. For those of you who've heard me before, I say I'll take 50 cent from everybody in this room before I take a dime from a developer. If you go back and listen to some of the council sessions, our own county executive had to go to the state to ask them for a pass so that the county council could vote on a bill that they otherwise would not have been able to vote on because they had, they wouldn't have had a majority, because so many people would have been exempted because they had received funding from developers. So absolutely, I would be in favor of funding this mandate. It needs to happen. You know, like Ms. Harrison, my daughter couldn't afford to live in Prince George's County, so we have to go over to Anna Rundle County to visit her where she could afford to purchase. And as we go, I'm looking at the signs out there, and it's just a few, just a few. Why? Because they have public finance, and they don't have these corners of littered with posters all over the place. It is time for us to have an even playing field. Like Michael said, it is time because there are those of us who are not who the establishment has chosen. And I'm fighting like a salmon going the wrong way in the water, but I'm fighting for a reason because you are important to me. The developers aren't. I'm not going there to represent them. I'm going to represent the residents of District 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, you've got it, okay?
First of all, I'm not beholden to anyone, developers, politicians, agencies, not beholden to anyone except me and my God. Let me just say that. And the people of District 4. Don't take developer money. First of all, it's illegal, so I don't want to go to jail. Second of all, it's a conflict of interest. It's not something that I would ever want to do. I totally agree with funding the public financing piece because I think it should and it will level the playing field for those who want to run for office, who are not pushed by the establishment. So I look forward to doing that and voting yes to fully fund public financing. Thank you.
This question is pretty easy, or should I say this direction is pretty easy? I've been given the sign that we are starting to wrap up, so I will ask each one of you to take three minutes to give a closing statement.
About four years ago, I got a tiny four-by-six postcard in the mail. It was a picture of this Japanese train that I hadn't seen before, something about a Skumaglev. And I said, that's weird. First I'm hearing of this. I saw that there was some tiny little writing about a public meeting, so I just went to it. I was curious. And I'm there, and there's all these engineers and planners from all And I'm there, and there's all these engineers and planners from all over the country who are talking about this superconducting Maglev train that's going to be coming right through our area. And I'm looking at a big map, and I can see my house, and I can see old Bowie, I can see the golf course, I can see some of the businesses I know, some of the schools, and I'm looking at lines going right through them. And I said, "Huh. That's surprising." And so I got on my newsletter email list, and I got about 1,000 people on it at the time, city residents in Bowie, and I said, "Hey, guys, I learned something today. There's a train coming. It's called the Skumaglev." I said, "We need to talk about this." So we had a meeting in old Bowie, and Bill Boone and Deborah Rice and a lot of folks came, folks who were still leading this effort. We had the meeting in old Bowie, in one of the very buildings that was going to get bulldozed to build this train. And I said, "Folks, I'm not telling you what you should think about this issue. I just want you to know that there is an issue." And I showed them big blow-up maps of where this train was going to go through and the facts that we had at the time, and the things that the engineers were telling me. Our residents were displeased, I think is the right word. And they then went on and led the effort with the city council, with our county and state leaders, to get the four routes that were bisecting Bowie schools and Bowie businesses and Bowie neighborhoods to get off the map. We didn't just talk about it, we didn't just whine about it, we didn't just write pretty please letters. We called Larry Hogan, we dragged him to Bowie, we introduced him to a bunch of people who voted for him, and then showed them the house that was going to get torn out to build this train that he wanted. And eventually, we browbeat him until he relented. Bowie no longer had the Maglev train going through it. And a lot of the folks who were involved in that, Bill Boone and others, are still fighting it here in Greenbelt, and I'm committed to continuing that fight in Greenbelt. But the fight to end the Maglev train isn't enough. We're very good at shutting things down in the United States. We're great at finding reasons not to build stuff. We dragged the Purple Line on forever. We stopped the creation of more metro stops in the area that today would have been very useful, but at the time, we didn't want, because we wanted to protect our very, you know, white communities back in the 1960s, 70s, and 80s. So I'm against the Maglev train, and we'll keep fighting it. And how we defeated the Maglev, I think, highlights how I've used my time and experience communicating with people and actually getting things done. But I want to go beyond just saying no to things. I want to make sure that we're finding alternative solutions as well. One of the things that I plan on doing and that I'm working on right now is working with the Bowie Green Team, the Environmental Advisory Committee, and other local resident groups to figure out how we can better do transit in our area. Yeah, we're saying no to the Maglev for a lot of really valid reasons, but that's not going to actually solve the congestion issue, and that's not actually going to take us closer to addressing climate change. So we need to figure out how to better make use of our mark stations, how to make use of the rail we already have, how to promote more EV charging stations and electrics so that we have alternatives on the road. If people have to drive, they can do so without putting a lot of carbon into the atmosphere, which is just a tax against my generation. That's the sort of thing we need to be doing. I want to be a yes-and county councilman, and I respectfully ask for your support and your vote. Michaelistev.com if you want to learn more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stett.
Thank you. It's simply been my honor, my honor to speak with you this afternoon, because I do not take this opportunity for granted. I'm actually humbled at the support that I've received as I've gone through Greenbelt, Glendale, Queen Anne, Bowie. It's humbling. I want you to know that I am the best candidate, the most experienced candidate at all levels of government, federal, state, local, and municipal. Because of my professionalism, you will have the confidence that I will represent you Because I am not collecting titles and looking for the next best thing, I finish a job that has been entrusted with me, because I'm already doing the work, and I'm effective at it. And most importantly, I'm listening to you. I ask that you get to know me, my character, my integrity, because it cannot be compromised. It is why I do not accept developer money. I'm not going to the county council to represent them. I'm going to the county council to represent you. When I go to the county council, I'm bringing a seat, because this is our government, and it's our tax dollars that pay for all of the services that we have. Please check out my website, votepatricemurray.com, where you can learn more about me, my past, my vision, and you can see me in the community, in our community. At votepatricemurray.com, you can volunteer, and as Michael suggested, you can donate there as well. If you're like me, you want a more responsive government, a leader not afraid to listen to the very people who will put me there, a leader who has and will continue to respond to your concerns. I thank you for your time this afternoon. Again, check out votepatricemurray.com, and I ask for your support and your vote on or before July 19. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
First, I would like to thank the Roosevelt Club for hosting this forum. It's been great. I appreciate it. It's always nice to stand up here and share my feelings on the issues or my stance on the issues, and I appreciate you all being here and taking time out of your schedule. You could have been doing anything on this Sunday afternoon, but you came here to listen to us, and I appreciate that, and don't take that for granted. You've heard my stance on the issues. I'm not going to go back over that, and you can always get more information at ingrid4, district4.com. But I just want you to know about me. I'm an advocate for the community. I have a passion for people. I'm an independent thinker. I'm responsive to the community. Constituent Services is number one for me. I'm a mom. I have two kids. They're grown. My son lives out in Washington State, and he's married, and I'll be a grandma in December. Pretty proud about that. So I really want to make them proud, both my kids. I want to make my community proud. I think it's important to be a stand-up person and have the values and make sure my kids know that I have the values that are positive and full of integrity. I want to make an impact. I want to partner. I want to collaborate, not engage in backdoor deals. And I want to move forward, as I said, in integrity, honesty, and a will to do what's in the best interest of the residents of District 4 in Prince George's County. Thank you so much.
Now you can applaud. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank each one of you for your attendance and to thank all of the candidates, because collectively, you made this possible. The organization and the people who put this together have some ideas, certain things going on in the future, such as a coffee with the candidates, and they will be reaching out to candidates to see if they are available with times and locations. So at this point in time, as we begin to wrap up, I would like to acknowledge those people who put this together. For some reason, they have my name at the top, but we won't go over that again. But Drusilla Sims with the Mount Nebo African American Episcopal Church, Savoy Brown Myers Lay Organization in Bowie, Millie Hall, Concerned Citizens of Prince George's County, District 4, Conrad Hurling, Eleanor and Franklin Roosevelt Democratic Club, Jay Davis, in her capacity with the Eleanor and Franklin Roosevelt Democratic Club, Janice Hagee, Mount Nebo African American Episcopal Church, Savoy Brown Myers Lay Organization, Devane Wright, Progressive Maryland, Rhonda Billingsley, who isn't here with us today, but of, oh, I'm sorry. She, so dump me going by script, but not by eyesight, of Concerned Citizens of Prince George's County, District 4. And I was supposed to acknowledge Randy Ford and the Briar Club, the Green Briar Community Center. So thank you all. So ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Bryce, and that ends our presentation for the evening. Thank you all so much.[1795.47][1795.47]